This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Public Open Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the home news Tribune, The Star Leisure, and the Highland Park Planets on January eighth, two thousand twenty-five, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbboro.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, two twenty-one South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to the right, my right and left, but council chair. Chief, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which is the same as one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Welcome.
Mayor Foster.
Yes.
Councilmember George. Councilmember Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Here.
Councilmember Prestone.
Here.
Councilmember Vargas. Borough Attorney.
Here.
And Borough Administrator.
Here.
Honors and awards tonight, you'll have a presentation proclamation that's going to be given by Councilmember Postamick for National Diaper Needs Awareness Week.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to read this proclamation. So today we have a proclamation in recognition of the week of September fifteenth through the September twenty-first of two thousand twenty-five, which is National Diaper Need Awareness Week. And so without further ado, we do this proclamation, whereas diaper need, the condition of not being able to afford a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, and healthy can adversely affect the health and well-being of children and their families. And whereas national surveys and research studies report that nearly one in two families struggle with diaper need and forty-eight percent of families delay changing a diaper to extend the available supply. And whereas a daily or week's supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers participating in childcare programs and quality early education programs that enable children to thrive and parents to work. And whereas many parents struggling with diaper need report missing an average of five days of work each month due to insufficient supply of diapers. And whereas without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention resulting in medical costs. And parents may be prevented from accessing childcare due to go-to-work or school, thereby destabilizing the family's economic prospects and well-being. And whereas the governing body Highland Park recognizes that diaper need is a public health issue and addresses diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's families and improve health for children, thus ensuring all children and families have access to the basic necessities required to thrive and reach their full potential. And whereas Highland Park is fortunate to be located here, the Ida Kushner Central Jersey Diaper Program, an initiative of the H&amp;M Community Development Corporation in New Brunswick, a five-in-one C three nonprofit organization that serves all residents of Middlesex County regardless of race, religion, gender, or ethnicity. The Ida Kushner Central Jersey Diaper Program is the only dedicated diaper bank in Middlesex County providing diapers, wipes, formula, and other essentials to children's families. Now therefore, I, Jason Saltmeyer, on behalf of Mayor Elsie Foster, mayor of Highland Park, do hereby proclaim the week of September fifteenth through September twenty-first of two thousand twenty-five as National Diaper Need Awareness Week in the borough of Highland Park. I recognize and thank the Ida Kushner Central Jersey Diaper Program, their staff, volunteers, and donors for their exemplary public service. Encourage the citizens of Highland Park to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and support those organizations that are likely to shoot in diapers to families struggling with diaper need so that all of Highland Park's children and families can thrive and reach their full potential. In witness thereof, I set my hand this second day of September, two thousand twenty-five. Councilmember Jason Saltmeyer, on behalf of Mayor Foster.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve minutes of August twelfth, two thousand thirty-five, regular meeting as distributed?
So.
Second.
Welcome.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Prestone.
Yes.
Okay, and now it's time for council report. And I'm gonna start off with Councilmember Hale.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Matt Hale, and I chair the Economic Development Committee. Too short a report tonight. I first wanted to say thank you to all of our residents who came out to our open house about the Third Avenue Plaza. We had about a hundred and fifty people show up over the course of the event. It was incredibly well attended, and we had our consultants, our chair there, and of course, we had our economic development team, Terry and Batuja, and set up a variety of different stations where people could come by and see some of the initial ideas and thoughts and plans, learn a little bit about the history of South Third. And it was a really, really great event, but I think from my perspective, the most important thing, there was a lot of enthusiasm and excitement about this, but there was also some really, really thoughtful and good questions that were working on to address. And so everybody who came out and brought their concerns, but also brought their excitement, we really, really appreciate it. The next step is take all of this information, massive amounts of information, and our chair is gonna collate, collect, and sort through it all to get sort of a big sense of what came out of the town hall meeting. This follows as series of focus groups that we've done with key stakeholders about Third Avenue. And then they started putting, I used to say it in the paper, but I think it's add to computers is what they do now, but they will come back as fast as they can with some good ideas about how to move forward. I will say just again, thank you to Terry and Batuja and all the council members who were there, the mayor was there. But I think one of the things that we all had to be thinking about is very, very much, one of the consistent things I heard is sooner rather than later. So we're very much heard the word that we'd like this to happen sooner rather than later. So thank you again to everybody who came to that. I'd also like to remind everybody that September fourteenth, from eleven-thirty to four-thirty, is the world, actually universe-renowned Highland Park Arts in the Park. It's our annual street fair and art exhibits. You know, this is a great opportunity to pick up gifts for upcoming holidays, birthdays, anniversaries. I'm sorry to your wife, a presence, it's a really fantastic place for people to be able to grab and get some really, really high-quality art. And the other thing that I think is interesting and important about Arts in the Park is that there's a number of local artists who come and set up shop. And this, you know, this can range from people who are professional artists to, you know, several years ago, my daughter and a friend of hers put their artwork out in one of their booths. And so there was sort of local artists, and it's a great opportunity to see local artists, but also lots of other artists. And just finally, just a reminder that during Arts in the Park is another opportunity to visit local businesses. It's, they have a huge amount of traffic that goes back and forth, but we want to make sure that people go in and actually support our local businesses during Arts in the Park. And then the last thing, I mentioned this before, we're starting a video project where the idea is that we are going to create a short TikTok and Instagram and Facebook posts, very, very short, very, very quick videos about specific businesses in Highland Park. I'll be very honest that I'm not really the expert on any of those platforms, but I have been working very closely with a twelve-year-old who really, really, he's actually twenty-five and a professional videographer. We've gone out and shot a couple of videos with various businesses, and I'm really looking forward to that project coming through. If there are businesses out there that are interested in this, please reach out to me. We'll schedule a time to come. It doesn't take a particular amount of time. What happens is we come in and we shoot videos, maybe ask some questions, we go back to the editing room, put them into a social media format. We'll show it to you, make sure you like it, make sure it's okay. And then our idea is to post it as widely as far as we can. So again, if you are a local business and you are interested in participating, please don't hesitate to reach out to me at my borough numbers or borough address. And that's all I have on here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hirsch.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Hale. I also had a great experience at the open house. It was brilliant, enlightening, it was a great opportunity to provide feedback, and it seemed like people were really enthusiastic, which is great. And our chair did a great job. Thanks to you and Terry and Batuja and Mayor. It's really exciting. It's just all really exciting. And I know it's a contrast to everything else that's going on in the world right now, but we really do have that power here at home to make this the most livable, wonderful place in the world where we can all live in peace and dignity. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I chair the Borough's Department of Public Works and Public Utilities Committee, excuse me, not the department. And I just, just a couple of reminders, happy September. It's a long way from May to September, and the days go short as we reach September. So here we go. Bulk pickup is going to be underway again in September, and it's by appointment only. So just a reminder that bulk waste collection will be scheduled on Wednesdays during the months of September and October. And to make an appointment, please call Public Works during regular business hours, seven to six-thirty to three P M., seven-three to two-four-seven-nine-three-seven-nine. And each household may request up to two collections per year. The week after the townwide garage sale, please mark your calendars with this if you're listening, that's Tuesday, October twenty-first, and Thursday, October twenty-third, there will be an additional bulk pickup that you do not have to schedule. No appointment is necessary, but recycling will not be collected that week. So just please make a note of it, and you'll hear me say this every time, every meeting, meeting up to the town line. Just a few notes about bulk materials may be placed at curbside no sooner than one hour before sundown of the date prior to the scheduled pickup. Materials not properly secured, bundled, and unacceptable items, which you can see at www.hbboro.com, will not be collected. And materials put out for collection without a scheduled appointment on the wrong date will not be collected. This is really important. It's not draconian or heavy-handed. This is for your own safety, for public safety, and to just make sure that our sidewalks are free and clear and that debris does not, you know, take up the verge in between the sidewalk and the curb for too long because it is a tripping hazard. And of course, you know, it's, the longer that sits there, the more it looks like there's just garbage collecting. So please make that appointment, and if you do see, you know, piles of material, particularly as people move maybe, and they are not being collected, feel free to give us a call and report. The, just a few, and I did want to mention just brush leaves and tree branches. And the borough does provide, excuse me, I'm sorry, the borough does provide leaf bags, which will be available for pickup after Indigenous Peoples' Day this year. So I just want to be mindful of that. If you are doing something to be your gardening and you are collecting leaves and brush, that the scheduled pickups do not start until later this year. So please keep a look at it, and we will post accordingly. And as usual, bags will be provided per property, and so we appreciate your participation in this effort. During November and December, leaves are collected curbside weekly when DPW will pick them up and deliver to a compost facility. But leaves must be placed curbside in either one of the biodegradable paper bags that we issue or loosely in garbage cans. Leaves placed curbside in plastic bags or cardboard boxes will not be collected. So please, please, please make a note of that. Do not rake leaves in the street. It's considered littering. It causes parking issues and other potential hazards, including clogged storm drains. It's also a violation of the borough ordinance as well. And just, and this ordinance is important, and as we talk about sustainable Highland Park, we'll see why, how we can adopt a drain and make sure that those drains do stay clear. Just a couple of meetings to note coming up, we have the Environmental Commission, which meets tomorrow, September thirtieth, eight P M. on Zoom. The Shades Advisory Committee meets next week, Wednesday the tenth at seven-thirty, also on Zoom. Sustainable Highland Park met last week, and they're busy as usual. And I just wanted to just raise a couple of upcoming items. Please keep a lookout at sustainablehighlandpark.org for community cleanups, usually on Saturdays and Sundays. The dates and times are always announced on the website, so please, please look up there. And it was, it's been a real great opportunity also to include my boards and commissions and liaisons to, into the, to provide feedback in the redevelopment process because it really is all hands on deck, and none of us exist in a silo. So, you know, every board and commission may have specific interests, like trees or heat island effect or stormwater runoff and impervious surfaces. So it's been a really great opportunity, and we really do appreciate that chance. So that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Postamick.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Saltmeyer. I chair the Health and Human Services Committee. I have a very brief report for tonight. First off, I just wanted to give a special thank you to the Human Relations Commission, to the Arts Commission, on behalf of my colleague, Councilman Vargas, for the repainting of Black Lives Matter mural, which happened on Sunday. So, which I was out of town, wasn't able to be there, but it looks like it went well. Freshly repainted, it looked good outside. So thank you to everyone for putting that together, making it happen. Next up, just a couple of items on the agenda I wanted to point out. One of them is the ordinance regarding the Human Relations Commission, sort of a reorg of that body to make them a little bit more operational because as it stands, they're pretty much never be able to make a quorum, so this will enable them to do good work that they do, to right-size it, very good in line with Human Relations Commissions and other towns. And then just want to make a note about a couple of the appointments for tonight, a couple of those that I happen to know. So for the Historical Commission, Chris Rasmussen, he's been a sort of volunteer member of the Historical Commission back when I was a liaison to that commission, had been pitching in and helping for a long time, so I see that coming as a full member. And then also Nate Dickerson and Will Blining, who are appointing for the Design Board Adjustment, like, both well, exceptional gentlemen, time off, both very happy and excited to have to see them appointed to Design Board, and would highly recommend their approval tonight. Lastly, I would just note that the Board of Health will have its first meeting after its little short summer break on September eleventh at seven P M. They meet on Google Meet, and they'll look, can you access on the borough website, hbbboro.com. Mayor, that's my entire report for tonight.
Thank you. Council President Kim Cho Han.
Good evening, neighbors. My name is Patton Kim Cho Han, and I chair Finance. On tonight's agenda, we're inserting two thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars in additional municipal alliance grant funds into the two thousand twenty-five budget. That's the chapter one fifty-nine to match the final award. Also, we have a shared service authorized in payments under our interlocal with Middlesex County for Woodward Jav, that's from North Tenth all the way up to Fox Road for improvements. And then on the, on the state level, senior freeze checks began July fifteenth. The anchor confirmation letters went out August thirteenth, and payments for that will start September fifteenth. Seniors now use one combined PSA dash one application for senior freeze, anchor, and STAJ. And the filing deadline is October thirty-first. STAJ quarterly payments will start in two thousand twenty-six. Also on the agenda, I'd like to welcome Elsie Atkins to the Rent Control Board as the tenant member. Thank you for serving. And September is College Savings Month. Highland Park families can open a NJ Best five-twenty-nine with as little as twenty-five dollars and set small automatic contributions. And with Grandparents' Day coming up on Sunday, you can invite those grandparents to gift into that account. So if you think you qualify for the seven hundred and fifty-dollar match or want details on the state tax deduction, visit H E S A A backslash N J Best and the New Jersey Division of Tax Station, or you can also talk to your tax advisor. And lastly, I want to wish all the children a safe school year. And that's my reporting.
Thank you. Borough Administrator.
Hi, Heidi Krea. Thank you. Yes, I have a couple items. One, I wanted to elaborate everybody's appreciation for the turnout at the open house for South Third. It exceeded our high expectations in terms of the number of people who came out and participated, and I really enjoyed all my conversations there, and I really appreciate all of the governing bodies attendance at that meeting as well. And I also wanted to, for those of you who may have missed the event, we will be having a small table, a micro version of that, at Arts in the Park on the fourteenth. So just look for the Borough's table with some fun-looking exhibits regarding plazas on South Third, and come say hi and learn if, what you missed, and tell us what you think. So you'll find us there on the street on Sunday. The other item I wanted to just call attention to on the consent agenda item, we have a resolution twelve E or nine twenty-five two oh seven regarding the designation of blocks two-two oh one, lot six-seven-nine-ten, forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight, otherwise known as the Sonoco and adjacent properties, as a condemnation area of redevelopment. I just wanted to remind everybody where we are in that process. The, there was a study that was conducted by the Borough Planner, Chris Casenza, that was presented to the Planning Board. The Planning Board reviewed the study, found it to be a meet the criteria, can basically concur with his findings. And so now this finding has been referred back to council for action tonight. The findings are that it meets the criteria, the area needed redevelopment with condemnation. What this now means is we should probably think about a plan for that site, and so you'll probably hear me come back with a proposal from our planner to do just that. And we will come up with a plan that we think will work and vet that through you and the public, at which point we'll hopefully have a plan we'd be ready to introduce and have the Planning Board review for us, and then come back to the council for adoption. So I just wanted to remind everybody where we are in the pipeline. This is, you know, we know this is a property, and these set of properties have a lot of potential, and I'm just excited to see it here on the agenda tonight, and I wanted to make sure everybody noticed that as well. So, thank you, Mayor.
Borough Attorney Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a report at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Now it's time for my report, and it feels weird to be here tonight because I feel like we had a long summer off, but it's good to be back. And not because you didn't see us on camera, we were busy working and doing what we had to do, as you heard from the rest of my council colleagues about all the stuff that they've been doing over the summer. And to make sure that our downtown is viable, to make sure that the programs that we have are working, and just good to be back again and to roll up our sleeves and dig deeper into the hard work. But as we do that, school opens on Thursday, and I'm gonna ask each and every one of us to remember that the little ones are crossing the streets, they're going, they're going back and forth to school, just slow down as you go through these intersections and write with caution. The speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour here in Highland Park, especially in our neighborhoods, that twenty-five miles an hour, and we want to make sure that everyone go, go to school, come home, go to work, and come home, and everyone is safe. So slow down in our town as you go about your, as you go about your day. And for those who are walking to school, pay attention to the road. Keep your eyes out of your cell phone until you cross the street, make sure that you cross the street safely, so please pay attention to that. I can't believe it, that next Thursday, we're gonna be, it's gonna be nine-eleven, nine-eleven celebration. We're gonna be having our memorial service here in Highland Park at approximately about nine o'clock that we'll start that process. So next Thursday, in front of the Police Department, anyone who's interested, please feel free to come out. And another serious note, I've noticed that there has been the lines of the food pantry, and the use of the food pantry has been, there is more need, and more need, and more need. So how can you contribute? If you're having a birthday party and you have an extra gift, or you're having a bar mitts, a bat smiths, a baby christening, anything like that, and you have extra money that you want to donate, please consider our food pantry to make that donation. Thank you, and that's my report. And now it's time for public participation, three minutes per speaker, limited to items on the agenda. Comments from people attending in person will be heard first, followed by those, and so we have no one in, again, attending from the public. Terry, what about so?
We have three attendees online, but no hands up.
Okay. See none, may I have a motion to close public participation?
So move.
Second. Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Prestone.
Yes.
Now we move to ordinance requiring second reading. Clerk, please report an ordinance number twenty-five dash two-one-one-six.
An ordinance amending chapter nine warrants committees and commissions, Article One, Human Relations Commission by amending subsection nine dash one, appointment of the code of the borough of Highland Park, Human Relations Commission has been duly advertised. For consideration of passage on final reading by title, an affidavit to publication are on file.
Public hearing, is there anyone on Zoom that, now it's time for public, now it's time for public hearing on this ordinance. If you wish to speak, come to the microphone. If there's anyone on Zoom, please raise your hand. Anyone on Zoom?
No hands up, Mayor.
See none, may I have a motion to close? May I have a motion to close public participation on this ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-one sixteen?
So move. Second.
May I have a motion to adopt ordinance?
I need vocal.
Oh, welcome.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Prestone.
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-one sixteen?
I'd like to move it in, thank the staff for helping put this together. Second.
Welcome.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Prestone.
Yes.
And now we move to our consent agenda. May I, may I say to the member of the councils, there's anything that they would like to separate of this agenda for a separate vote? The consent agenda. None? Okay. Well, see none, may I have a motion to adopt the following consent agenda items, twelve A through twelve I?
Move. Second.
Welcome.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes, and I just, just a comment on twelve E, it's a really amazing, it's returned as a credit to the economic development team, this council, and the mayor for making sure that this effort moves forward. We've all had our eye on this site for a very, very long time, so this, as long as we've lived here. So it's really, really great to see this movement forward.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Prestone.
Yes, and just to echo, tell a Councilman Hirsch's comments, tonight's actually my twentieth anniversary, and I think she's okay with me being here to vote in support of this. And I'm like, along with the rest of the committee folks, and I've been in Highland Park, I'll just see something of that property. I vote yes.
I thank you so much for your dedication, Councilman Postamick. We appreciate you for being here for this.
Yes. Oh, and thanks to my whatever, watching kids all here.
Yes. Now we move to appointments. Historical Commission, Chris Rasmussen. zoning board of adjustment, Nicholas Dickerson, alternate number three. William Ben Blining, alternate number four. Rent Control Board, Elsie Atkins, tenant member, crossing guard, Judy Dorvo. May I have a motion to confirm?
So move.
Welcome.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Prestone.
Yes.
Now it's time for the second public participation, and there's no one in our ordinance, is there someone on Zoom?
I see three folks in the audience, but no hands up at this time.
Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion? May I have a motion to close public participation?
So moved.
Brokaw. Brokaw.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Prestone.
Yes.
Okay, we were going to go into executive session, but that's tabled for this time. We'll have our public, we'll have a discussion next time. When you're.
Yeah, I don't need motion to table.
Okay, may I have a motion to table, to, to table executive session? And Resolution nine dash twenty-five dash two one one, executive session litigation, Kutchkins versus Highland Park.
So moved. Second.
Brokaw. Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Prestone.
Yes.
May I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
May I have a favor? I want a favor.
Aye.
See you on the sixteenth, everyone. Have it safe, 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 safely.